So I've got it as seven oh two, so I will, I'll adjourn the this. May twenty seventh meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board. So first order of business is a call to order. So Bill Spalding.
Here.
Theo Noel.
Here.
Kevin York.
Here.
And myself as well. So we have a lot of core and we have four of the five members. So moving on to item number two, approval of the May thirteenth. Twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Have all the members of the planning board had a chance to review and does anyone have any comments? Uh, Mr. Spalding.
I did not have a chance to review.
Okay. Um, does anyone have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented unless Bill, unless you wanna wait.
No, that's okay.
Okay, alright.
Motion by Theo, do I hear a second?
Second.
So motion by Theo's uh second by Kevin uh to a roll call vote. Bill?
I'm staying.
Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So motion passes three, two, nothing. So uh, meeting minutes for the May thirteenth twenty twenty five meeting are approved. So moving on to item number three, review of the draft housing production plan. So we have uh Jen Goldston here, who's the consultant with the housing production plan, uh Jim Goldston. So I'll turn it over to Jen.
Great, and if I could just get sharing request, that would be great.
You believe you got it?
Perfect, thank you. Alright. So uh, I know I was um presenting uh, I forget when it was now, time goes by fast, but uh, I think it was a couple of months back. Around the housing needs piece and um, and and kind of focused on an earlier stage of the plan and. And now we're getting to the, getting to the end of our work and uh, and really this plan is, you know, shaping out. Um, to have a set of goals and strategies that have been uh vetted. I think you've seen this at least once before at this point, and we've made some changes. Um. And so what I wanna focus on tonight, if it's okay with you all, is uh, where did we land with those five year goals? And then what are the strategies and how do they relate to those goals? So I've just excerpted because the file is getting so big, it clogs up my. Uh, computer here, bogs it down. So I just excerpted that one, that one part to to kind of screen share and and walk through. And then um, and then I have uh, you know, I'm happy to take any questions you have on. How those strategies are implemented in other communities or any examples we have or or anything like that that you wanna ask me. Um, the process is that the um, it does the housing production plan before it is submitted to the state for approval. Does need to be approved by, by the planning board uh and your town council. And so that, that is a requirement. I don't know if you are thinking of voting to approve it tonight, or if you really just want this to be. Informational and you'll take it up at a future, a future meeting, um, but what whatever works best for, for. For the board and for and for the town.
Jen, I think from our perspective, just to to chime in on that, I think our intent is to. Get a copy of this, the the draft copy was distributed to the board uh as of the this afternoon. So I think I wanted the board to have the opportunity to review it and then we'll probably put it on the agenda in the future to discuss and then um. Deliberate whether or not we would approve it.
Perfect, that that makes a lot of sense and uh, I'm not sure why it was so late to you. Um, so I. If it, if it had anything to do with us, I apologize for that, but um, I was hoping it would get out in your packet. But that makes sense for you to digest it. And this is, I would say, there's a lot of information in the housing production plan, a lot of requirements around. You know, the analysis that that we need to do. And it's not that that's not important, but I think the policy piece, that's the most important thing for you to focus on in your. Review, since you've seen those other pieces already, is really this, it's chapter seven. That's um, that's the policy kind of roadmap for, for the town for the next five years and. And let me just say, when I say a policy roadmap, um. You know, a map has uh, uh, you know, if you use a Waze. It will, you know, you'll have a goal, you'll have an end destination, maybe you wanna go to your mother in laws up in Maine or something. Um, and ways will give you all sorts of routes to get there and you usually. You know, pick the one that is the fastest or the cheapest, doesn't have tolls or. Or is scenic or whatever it is. You wanna stop by the outlets, you wanna divert. That's kind of how I think of this. The goals are what you're aiming towards. But the strategies are just a bunch of different routes. And it's quite possible that you may go down one route and realize there's a traffic jam, you can't get that one through, you can't get that zoning passed. Or you, you can't get the funding. And then you move on and think about, well, how else can we? You know, maintain Wakefield's existing affordable housing stock above the state's ten percent minimum. And it could be through one of the strategies we've listed, or several of them more likely, or it could be something else that someone thinks of. Um, this is really, uh, you know, I view it, as I said, a roadmap more than a blueprint. If that makes sense, I don't know if there's any engineers and architects here, but in my mind, that makes sense to me. And there's not, okay, too good. And there's nothing, uh, even when you get a housing production plan approved by the state. It's really an incentive based tool. Um, you know, you're not required to do it, you do it voluntarily. And um, and if you don't meet these goals, or if you don't implement. The strategies, uh, there's no negative repercussions to that. There's no stick involved in a housing plan. It's really. A housing production plan, it's really, these are a bunch of ideas, this is where we're trying to head and. And you'll be able to implement some, most likely not implement others. And sometimes new things will come along that you think, well, that's a great idea, let's try that. Or. Maybe there's some new state mandate that comes down the road and changes the the picture for you too. So. So with that, you know, sometimes we get questions, you know, what if we don't implement this? Are we gonna get? You know, I I would say no, the the important thing is having it. Uh, it does um, give you more points for certain funding um, that the state looks at, so it's good to have it. Uh, but there's no requirement that you implement it to the T. Alright, so with that being said, it's not to minimize its importance, because I think this can be a very useful. Document for the community, especially for the planning board, also the, the town council. I think that. If local leaders believe in this plan and they agree with the general intention and the, and the. And the, the, the general route that you're trying to go, um, I, I think it can be more powerful for the community to help address needs. So. All that stuff being said about how it's incentive and you don't get penalized, I still hope that you're able to really implement it and take it seriously. And so it's, it is important to review it carefully and make sure that you think it's a reflection of where you're trying to get to in the next five years. Um, alright, so. Is this big enough for everyone? I could make it a little bit bigger. It's good? Okay, good.
Yeah.
So, the five years' goals, so we have um, six five year goals here. And there's no magic to this, but we always try in our, in my practice to talk about the ten percent requirement. As well as other options for housing needs and um, and then we try to pull out. Things that are important, either because we see the importance through the data analysis that we've done. Or because community members have called out that these things are particularly important. More often though, uh, and almost always, it's both. We see in the data. That what people are seeing in their community because they're living there and experiencing it, that the data matches up with, with that. And that's what we're seeing in Wakefield. And so you'll see that the first one is really kind of more standard about, yeah. Wanna, you know, maintain that ten percent goal. I know you dropped down a little bit recently and there's been some fluctuation. And so just keeping an eye on that um, and, and, and that, that's actually the first goal. It doesn't have to necessarily be worded like this. But you need some goal around the S H I and ten percent. Um, the second one is something we, we typically put something in about a range of options. Um. And we'll phrase this differently depending on what the community members are telling us, that they really uh, care about or are concerned about. So. You know, we're thinking, when you do your more thorough review, thinking about the way we've worded things. We wanna make sure that it resonates with your community, with your local leaders. Um, but the idea here is that. If you, uh, you know, if you, if you have a community where you don't have a lot of options. People just have less choice and there's less freedom of choice. And so the idea here is to have several options, not just. The big scale, you know, very large, you know, high density housing and single family, those are kind of the two ends of the extreme. But things in the middle too. And that's what we talk about in some of the strategies as well, but that's what this one is getting at, promoting a range. Of housing options for everyday earners. And the idea is. It's not just about affordable housing, it's also just about people who live here, people who, you know, maybe it's your kids who want to live here. Um, or other folks who, who want to work in Wakefield or nearby. Uh, and so it's really about those everyday people. Um, the third one is something that we pulled out because the data supports it, but also because the um. The working group and the, and the community engagement also supported this. So. Support independence and dignity for seniors and residents with disabilities. And we spent some time in the working group talking about the wording. Of, you know, it's not just seniors and it's not just seniors with disabilities, but it's also residents with disabilities. Who may or may not be seniors. So this is about both. And we also talked about. It's not just about mobility limitations that came out several times in both the committee and the engagement. It's also about folks with other disabilities, intellectual or developmental neurodivergent residents. And these are things that we specifically put in. Because it was talked about and um encouraged in the reviews. Uh, okay, and then the fourth one is really thinking about um. You know, we, we, we chose the words neighborhood scale housing, and this is a lot around um. You know, that missing middle idea. I don't know if you've probably heard that concept being on the planning board. It's just what I was describing a moment ago. You know, you, most communities don't wanna be a community of just single families and really, really high density with. None of the ki- kind of in the middle. And so this is about. Can you, can you focus on barriers? A lot of them are zo- you know, more zoning related barriers. To creating that neighborhood scale housing. So this is talking about um. Scaled housing growth in strategic areas, so maybe larger, more dense uh, housing near transit, commercial centers. Uh, and then we talk about at the same time, removing barriers to modest neighborhood scale housing. In existing residential areas, so not overwhelming those areas with high density, but really thinking. How can you do the, that's smaller, more incremental, you know, accessory dwelling is, is already allowed, but. How can you encourage that, looking at two family duplexes, three family, things like that, that won't dramatically alter the look. In fact. You can design, you know, some of your architects, engineers, you know, you can design a two family, it can look just like a single family. Um. It's a lot of it about, is more about the form and the, and the design and being on the, on the planning board. I think you, you know that when you're dealing with that general density. It really can fit very well into that smaller neighborhood context. So that's what that one's about. Then um, the fifth one. It um. It's really about outreach and engagement. It's um, talking about transparency and decisions. And, and how uh, resources are allocated in the community. Um, but also public understanding of housing needs and solutions. And I think Wakefield did a great job using this plan as a. The, you know, the planning process as a platform to start to get those conversations going. And the idea here is to. To keep those conversations going so that people could really be informed and uh. And have a, have a say in those solutions with a, with a really strong understanding of implications and needs. And then the last one here, streamline local collaboration. So this one is more uh, about. Town boards and committees, but also other partners um, that may work with the town and uh, and it's really gonna take. You know, a village, so to speak. Uh, and you can see that these strategies are not done by just the planning board. Or just the town council. There's a lot of collaborative, collaborative expectations around that. And so that's what this one is all about. Okay, before I get into the strategies, does anyone have any questions or thoughts or comments on those, on those goals? And I'm happy to. To scan back up here.
Does any member of the planning board have anything they wanna ask?
Um, I, uh, A, I, I certainly like the five year goals. Um, and I really like uh. The whole process and how uh, uh. The, your firm has really helped, I think, walk, walk us through the development. Um, and so that, that's been really helpful. Um, the, I think the um. I would love, as we go forward, to really uh, help us uh, and. It, I, I'm sure this gets into more of the strategies, but talking about strategic growth and removing barriers to neighborhood scale and. Um, and goal number five about uh, building public understanding. Um, those were the, the, the real limitations. That uh, I think Wakefield has encountered uh perennially and especially in our. Um, our most recent uh, chapter forty A uh, discussions. Um, and um. So I think, uh, and there were even um. Uh, misrepresentations of what gentle density looks like. Um, and uh, really hard to um. Confront that in a, a supportive way, um, or, or to discuss it in a supportive way. Um, and so that, that would be really helpful. I mean, we, we certainly have adopted um. A strategic plan for forty A and um, I think. This, this can also help us think a little more, uh, what are the next steps to, to, to make? Uh, that, you know, uh, achieve that growth um, that, that we've tried to lay the ground, groundwork for. And um, I think uh, yeah, I, I was already writing, um, would love more. Pragmatic, practical suggestions about how to build communication around the H P P and um. Sort of maintaining public uh, or growing public uh, understanding, so.
Yeah, that, that's great, that's great Theo. I lo- I love um. Kind of your perspective on, on that and hearing about the, the misrepresentations that you've seen. It, it is pretty common and. Um, you know, one thing that um, you know, we added a, a somewhat of an executive summary in here like we do in all of our plans, but. You know, these H P Ps, because of the state requirements and just the level of work that goes into it. They're not very accessible to the general public. You know, people open it up and they, they see a bunch of charts and tables and by the time you get to chapter seven. You know, you're, you're, you've kinda lost most people. So one thing that um. You know, you could do maybe even in-house. I'm not trying to get more work for my firm, although if you want us to do more work, I'm very happy to. But we have created a more um. Public facing executive summary that's very graphic. We actually have a graphic designer we work with to. Kind of, it's more of like a pamphlet around housing needs with a lot of photos and images and drawings of. Of um, you know, what does, what do these concepts that we're talking about look like? And it's not, it's not as detailed. By far, it's only like ten pages long, but it kinda goes through the highlights um, so that people can. Um. Absorb it better and it's easily converted to a PowerPoint that you could take to the. You know, to the next, whatever it is, you're talking about a zoning change or whatnot. So. So something to keep in mind. Um, and again, we're not the only people who do stuff like that. And I'm sure, you know, in-house, you could probably do that too, but that's often a helpful. Um, kind of tangential work product to have.
And Jen, when you, when you're talking about that, that type of, I'll call it more cartoonish based.
Mm-hmm.
Friendly presentation of information. What are the types of things that you're? You're looking to include in that? And, and the reason I ask is by way of some context, when we went through the whole. Section three A M B T A Communities Act. The initial proposal that was developed by a working group that had members of this planning board as well as C B A. Concom, town council, et cetera. The, the, the concept that was developed that time. Really revolved around a, I call it a gentle density, where we were gonna allow four units as of right. Of centered around our. Main street downtown, as well as one of our commuter rail stations. With the same dimensional requirements that are currently on the books as it relates to lot sizes and. Well, I take it back, lot sizes were slightly different because of the, the intricacies of the law, but setbacks, et cetera, right?
Okay.
And we struggled mightily against the perception that we were. Overloading and overstraining the public. Infrastructure associated with the area. Traffic was a constant thing that came up, schools was a thing that came up. And no matter how many times you, you stood up and said. Yes, the law technically mandates that we need to have this many of new zoning u- units, you know, that are theoretically gonna be built. We all understand that that's not.
Right.
Practical. And it became a really difficult uphill battle where it doesn't matter how many facts and figures you're showing people. People are saying, you're zoning for more housing, I don't want any more housing, therefore I'm against it. And so, I, I would, I'd love to hear if you have any strategies in terms of, if we were to try to implement any of these goals. Associated with this mix of policy objectives. What are some of the ways that we can thoughtfully bring people along for that conversation without triggering? You know, some, some pretty extreme emotional reactions of, why are you trying to ruin my town?
Yes. So what we've seen work and, you know, each place is different, right? You know your community better than I ever will. Um, but what we've seen work in other places is taking, number one, I need, I know you have. Uh, you're up against deadlines and whatnot, but, but, but taking your time actually works better and bringing people along rather than presenting a. Uh, this is our proposal. Um, but helping uh, kind of. With a, with a longer kind of more hands-on process. Of people feeling as though they've helped to shape what this is. Um, a process like that also can help bring out those quieter advocates that um. You know, they may not be the loudest ones at uh, at the meetings and, and the most vocal ones or the ones even with the most. Time on their hands. But having a process where you kind of deconstruct it so that you're not giving any, any um. You know, any, any particular person a soapbox or a group of people, but you're really breaking down conversations. With people who are knowledgeable, like you all and the committee that we worked with. Um. Breaking down the conversations to, to kind of create it together, rather than coming in with a. Um, and you know, maybe you did do some of this, I'm not saying you didn't, but, but I like to come, come with um. Either you can do it in a couple of ways. You can either say, we've looked at three different scenarios and this is like. You know, uh. Whatever, i- it's usually like a high, medium, low kind of um scenario, even though I know you're trying to hit certain numbers and whatnot, but there's different ways to do that.
Yeah.
Um, and then, but the other way to do it is to come in with a, a more blank slate. And then build up to the three scenarios and then build up to the two preferred and then build up to the, the one preferred and. Uh, it's probably, it may sound like folks that are very action oriented in particular, that this is like a long and painful process. But it's, I find that it works better. Um, uh, you know, when people are presented with the one thing. Uh, or even when they're just presented with anything, rather than feeling like they're rolling up their sleeves with a blank map and. A good understanding of the requirements, so.
And Jen, I, I think we would have loved, so, so in full transparency, right? That, that plan that I referred to got shot down at town meeting.
Yeah.
Another plan that got. Developed by a different group, I'd call it more in the paper compliance. And that ended up passing. So we're not up against any timelines associated with it.
Okay, I forgot that, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, it's all set. Um, the, the reason I asked though was, I believe, based on various conversations. We have this housing production plan, we've got a master plan, we recently did a Wakefield twenty thirty visioning plan, we got all these plans. And I think, w- we're also going through a bylaw reconsification process, which is anticipated to wrap up this fall. So I think, no, a number of members of this planning board are, are kinda getting to the point where. We've done a lot of these visioning and, and, and master plan type of exercises. And now people are interested in, okay, so. What do we do with that, right? And how do we build, craft the process after we start? Where we're going to try to make it inclusive, but the reason why I'm asking the, the, this line question is. When we had that plan that got shot down, we tried, we had a working group, all of our sessions were, were um, recorded and posted. We tried to get engagement, but we didn't really get any engagement until we put something out and said, this is the proposed plan. And then everyone was uh. Not receptive to the plan. And because of the nature of that law, we, you know, there wasn't a lot of wiggle room. A- and the group was based, the group that developed it was basically like, look, we developed this plan, we, we think it's the best plan. And then they wanted to stand firm and get, stand firm with it, right?
Yeah.
But how do you, how do you drive that engagement? Because, you know, if we say we're gonna start this plan, but there's nothing to react to.
Yeah.
We have found it's historically really difficult to drive engagement, unless you get someone who comes in and basically screams at you and says, why are you changing anything?
Yeah.
I mean, getting people to show up at these meetings, like, no, people don't usually, right?
Yeah, yeah. You know, we found a few strategies have worked in situations like that. W- one. Um, well, let me ask you, you know, to the extent that you can be transparent with me on this public meeting right now. Um, you know, to what extent would you say your local leadership is, is supportive of these? Um, you know, some of these i- ideas that you're, that you're trying to, to, to open up.
You know, it's, it's a mixed bag, candidly, right? Um, I would say it's a mixed bag trending towards, based on some recent turnover. Um, probably on the more supportive side, but it has been historically some very vocal. Opposition to these types of things and some more reserved support. It, it, is the way I characterize it.
I, I would s- I would, I would look at like a, I don't know, maybe a three-pronged approach. One part would be focusing on the local leadership and it doesn't necessarily have to be just your elected leadership. But people that you could probably identify as being seen as local leaders. Um, I would do, uh, I would just start with a bunch of conversations, even if they're one-on-one, you know, phone call, like. You have questions, you understand, you know, making sure that folks really have the facts. And also just trying to get at what, what are some of the real fears or issues there? And are they? You know, how, to what extent are they perceived versus reality? Um, and just trying to br- break that down and deconstruct it amongst the leadership so you can really understand. Uh, and it takes work, uh, those one-on-one discussions take a lot of work, but um, but I, and I'm not. Suggesting anybody violates the eating law or has serial communications or anything like that. I'm just trying to say. You know, sometimes you, sometimes people don't even know what they really think, or you might not understand until you can have a deeper conversation about it. So that's one piece. The second piece um. Uh, is looking at um, the advocates out there. Um. And kind of pulling them out of the community in all different ways, like there are probably folks that um. Uh, represent all different um, types of folks in Wakefield. Maybe they're kind of long timers, newcomers. Uh, younger folks with families, uh, older seniors and whatnot. And having those. Folks to the, to extent that you can find people who are willing to speak out, to, to form kind of a vocal advocacy group. And that takes some work too, cause you really need to identify who are those people. And they, they probably are not your local elected officials, right? I'm talking about other people in the community that. That maybe will, would support certain aspects, maybe not everything, but certain aspects. And, and so what some groups have done. Or communities, I should say, have done is formed kind of these non, you know, they're, they may be sparked. By the local government, but they're really a separate uh, volunteer entity that gets a wind of its own. Um, I know that Chappa, you guys are familiar with Chappa. Um, they, I don't know to the extent they're doing technical assistance at this very moment. I lost track of what cycle they're in, but. But they've done a lot of technical assistance throughout the state to try to get these advocacy groups going and, and. And what these people ultimately do, there might be fifty people, you know, that. Or maybe less, I don't know. Um, that are, you know, involved because they care um, about these issues and. They learn how to come out to public meetings and be vocal and write letters and get in the. You know, if you still have a local paper and get on the cable show and talk with local elected officials. And they learn, they teach them basically how to be. Uh, kinda counterbalance the other voices that you typically hear. So that's, those are. Two things. And then I said that it was gonna be three-pronged and, and I guess what I'm thinking of is um. Yeah, I don't know if anybody's seen uh, Show Me a Hero, that HBO uh, mini-series. It was out like. I don't know. Before COVID, so who knows? I don't know. Six, seven, eight years ago. And um, it's about Yonkers, it's about basically courts. Uh, court mandate in Yonkers back in the. I think it was the eighties, I might have the date a little bit wrong. Um, but basically Yonkers had to build. Affordable housing that was not in the projects, like separated by the highway. And one of the strategies. Um, was to get the voc- the most vocal uh, opponents. Um, involved in the process. And so if there are, you know, like twenty, thirty people, I don't know how many. You probably know who some of those vocal, like you already know who they are. Getting them directly involved, like having. Focus groups with those folks, mixed in with those advocates. Focus groups with those folks mixed in with those advocates, mixed in with some of those local elected officials like. And deconstruct each issue, take them one by one and you you know, sometimes you're not gonna change people's minds, but sometimes it um. It um waters it down a little bit because if there are actual rational factual things that, you know, you can look at and. Say, well, this is the impact on X and this is the impact on Y, what else, you know, what else do you, what other concerns do you have? Let's take them one by one. Um, so it's a lot, it's a lot of like, it's community organizing work. Um, when you do those, you know, public forums, and I know we tried to do this as well in our process and it's tough. But when you just do a community forum and or meetings and you post them and you hope that people will come. That is usually um harder, it depends on the community, but when you break it down, identify people, do things one by one, small groups. Um, you know, also have those larger meetings, but.
Yeah.
Do the organizing kind of first or along with that. So that would be my suggestion, I know it is a lot of work and you just lost Sam and you know, I don't know who's gonna do all the work, but but um. But I think that that that's the kind of, it's like a lot of sweat equity around those conversations.
You know, that that that's very helpful, um, the other thing I would ask from a process perspective is, you know, there's a number of diff-. Different recommended zoning elements in here, um, specifically. Uh, some issues related to either overlays or potential changing of some of the dimension requirements. Uh, do you rec- you know, there's also kind of separate and other things that are related to. Cottage core or townhome styles or for age-friendly, um, age-friendly uh uh development. Do you recommend taking those and and trying to have a com- comprehensive conversation around those? As one article, or do you recommend literally breaking it out and having. A whole warrant associated with each individual component and debating each of them on the merits. Uh, I just don't know from a a bundling versus segregating of the content, if you've seen one strategy be more effective or less.
Yeah, I I know I've seen it be successful both ways, um. I've seen communities who take it piece by piece and you know, maybe you take the full. For, you know, I just, I just scrolled over to where a bunch of the zoning strategies are. You know, y- y- some of these are easier than others, like, well, this isn't really a zoning, it's mobility action plan, um. Oh, that's a plan, it's a little bit different, but for these zoning, like the form-based codes ones and um. This idea of the converting vacant commercial spaces, that's a feasibility study, but it could lead to zoning changes, um, that's kind of the first step and then. The cottage core townhome style, yeah, I think what I would do is um. You know, the political strategy, i- i- there's not one right way to do it, so I'm I'm kind of hesitating. To give you like, this is the way I do it, uh, but I think that of with a with a concept like form-based codes. Um, you might try the one that you think might be less controversial first. And get people like familiar with, or you might not even call it a form-based code, like it doesn't really matter that it's form-based, that's like to the geeks. You know, the folks like we are, we care that it's called that, but but really people just care that we're looking at. You know, design and mat- height, I wouldn't even use the word massing, but I'd really.
Yeah.
Really look at like scale and neighborhood compatibility and things like that and. You know, maybe this one would be easier, number six, form-based, maybe not, maybe maybe look, anything in neighborhoods is gonna be like. The harder one, um, depending on what what your answer to that is, maybe doing number nine before you do number six makes more sense because. People are already talking about downtown and already like used to, or maybe, maybe not, so you know, I'm I'm not giving you a straight answer, but I think. Uh, my, my instinct without knowing the politics of Wakefield as well as you do. Is that breaking it down, kind of um explaining things one by one. Is a little less scary to folks, like sometimes folks just. Deny something because it's overwhelming and they don't understand it all and they don't wanna make a mistake. And so sometimes when you bundle things together, there's so much there that folks may. Feel too overwhelmed to support it, even if maybe they do like the idea of downtown, but they're scared about. The cottage courts or, you know, whatever, I'm just making up examples. Um, on that, I'm gonna be my own devil's advocate, on the other hand, and this is like a more cynical. Little bit more cynical, you know, if sometimes it's, you know, I don't know if you've seen this or not, but sometimes. Planning boards, zoning boards, they spend hours talking about six inches, you know, increment. Into the rear yard setback of somebody's deck and they may spend, you know, two hours talking about the forty unit. Um, development um on the edge of town, li- I mean, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but. But that often happens where we can get hyper-focused on something that we actually can pick apart and understand and is concrete. And we'll just be like, oh, just approve it if it's, if it's too much, so people can kind of go both ways, so I know I just said two opposite things. And that's why I'm having, it's hard for me to answer that without knowing, you know, the history of. Of what your town meetings have been like, what the conversations have been like, if you think people will. Um, really want to to learn about these these techniques. Um, and which ones, i- and if that's the case, I'd break them out more so that you can do more teaching. And I'd probably start with the most, the least controversial in your mind and then work your way to. You know, incrementally.
No, that that's really good, that's really good feedback, I think we'll we'll probably end up seeing what happens with the bylaw recodification, depending on how much that. Gets engagement, for lack of a better term, a- as it goes to the balance of this process.
Yeah, yeah, and keeping an eye on that and then, you know, if you can line, I forget, I'm so sorry, I get, I get. Um, sometimes I get the details uh lost in my mind, but is your town meeting representative?
No.
Oh, it's open town meeting, okay, yeah, so that.
That that's where we have, we we struggle really because it's the balance of trying to get people. With the amount of patience that people might have in an open town meeting and who have a a wide variety of backgrounds.
Yeah.
Trying to get into the weeds of zoning, which some people want to do and are agitated and they think that you're hiding something if you're not getting into the weeds.
Yeah.
Balancing that with someone who is not particularly engaged in the topic a- and so it's that constant push and pull. Right, and it's trying to find that middle ground, which historically is is very challenging.
Yeah, do you have um strong neighborhood groups or wards or district groups or any organization like leading up to town meeting? Where people get together and try to learn about things?
I mean, Billy, I could, I I defer to you, I mean, I haven't really observed much of that type of political action.
With um, yeah, thanks for, this is really good information, just to. Yeah, we, we've had in the past, so there's different precincts in Wakefield, but there's no representation, so for example, town council. That town council person who was elected doesn't represent a certain precinct.
I see.
So there's not a lot of accountability when it comes to who can you talk to that will help you if things aren't going well. On the west side of Wakefield, for example, um, so that that I think is an issue, we um. We do have some strong community groups in town and the strongest one is probably the Lake Monopawit. So the um, what's their full? Yeah, the the group, so I think that's probably the largest, longest, most respected group when they do speak up and they've helped with stuff in the past. Um, we don't have any other groups that are defined, we have like a lot of. Cities and towns have, we have um groups that have. Joined together their own forces because they're like-minded and. As you know from your experience, all it takes is a certain amount of signatures to get something reversed. Or at least on the ballot, so or on the town warrant for, so it's, it's interesting how that happens and a group. Um, in the past have, well, they have um. They've put out information that hasn't been entirely.
Um. Accurate or?
Well, yeah, the accuracy was a little questionable, but it's more about showing just the information that makes their point. And triggers a lot of people that will go to town meeting or oppose or whatever because of that, so I mean, this isn't. Just unique, obviously, to um Wakefield, but no, we do not have any really strong. Groups in town, we have like the Democratic Party group that meets, we have different groups that meet, but and and that. Things rise out of that, we have a safe streets group, we have and we did have a bike lane for like seven days. Um, on North Ave.
Okay.
Yeah, so in December last year, so there's a, there's, there's a lot of. Hyper-focus on the minutia and I think. Not that it's distracting from other bigger things that have to get done in town, but to Jim's point, the master plan. Was completed a few years back and um, we had Sam for a short amount of time. But we really didn't have a town planner, we had an amazing economic and community developer director. Erin Kokinda, who we still have, but she was trying to do both, which was not practical. But we obviously right now, without having a town planner is also a big um. Issue.
Yeah, um, yeah, uh, that's interesting about the different groups and how the precincts aren't represented, that does make it trickier.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I wonder if working with the other groups that are, uh, you know, like you said, uh, like. Want to power it, um, the Democratic Party group, even the safe streets group, like even though safe streets may not be about housing in particular, it's still a group. I would like, I would try to access all the organized groups that, cause they care about the community and they. You know, already have a voice on other issues, so I think you could nurture that and I know it takes a lot of work, um, are you, is the town? Fun- has the town funded a new town planner, like will they be replaced?
Yes, the 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 issue that we're running against is we're also going through a retirement of our town administrator. And so I find it difficult to believe that we're gonna have a new town planner. Until that process plays out, which I think is gonna be um, a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that is tough, so I I guess in terms of the sequencing, uh, I mean, Mike, you can. You can certainly disagree, there's no science to this, it's more of a art and and instinct and kind of knowing. The politics of your community and what might work, but I would start with some easy, some something you think might be less controversial. And I would do my best to the extent that, you know, as volunteers and the staff that you do have access to. Can do some community organizing, getting out to different meetings of these various groups to. To just start to lay the groundwork of a relationship to explain like, you know, which one, well, which one do you guys think would be lit? I have this page open, but you know, there's obviously some, some others, we've got these other zoning ideas, the hammerhead lot thing and. Um, some of these are not.
I did, I did wanna ask, I don't a hundred percent understand what you just mean by hammerhead lot.
Aha, well, that's okay, because I have a backup presentation with some pictures, so let me stop the share and I'm gonna. Switch my screen over to this. So I tried to anticipate every question I could think you might ask me and uh, you can ask me about local preference too if you want, um. This is my slide on cottage courts, but let me just go down to. So basically, some people call it a pork chop lot, I don't know what you call it, I've heard it called both. Um, but it's usually like you've got this house in the front or building, sorry, I'm losing my voice a little. And I I called it Sugar Plum Street, I thought that was cute, um, but there's a house on Sugar Plum Street and then you've got this. This like L-shaped lot or upside down and flipped L, depending on how you look at it. Um, and maybe the front, it doesn't really have enough frontage to be its own lot. But it's pretty big lot, I mean, you could easily fit a building back there, it just doesn't happen to have that that frontage, so that's what a pork chop lot means or a hammerhead.
Gotcha.
So it's just a way of, it's it's really an infill idea, um. You know, you'd obviously have to have enough room for the parking requirements and a driveway and the setbacks and all of that. Can stay, still be required, but it's just really giving that, usually it's the frontage that's the issue. And that there's this narrower strip that doesn't quite meet your frontage requirement, so giving some flexibility. Uh, in certain circumstances, like if the lot size is adequate and there's buildable land and you could still meet the rear and front yard setbacks and all that and. Does that make sense?
Is that, is that typically the, from a zoning perspective, comparing what we have now? To something that would be more conducive to this type of development, is that really creating provisions where you're you're allowing? For an easy mechanism for relief from the frontage if you meet X, Y, and Z other criterion?
It could be a relief in the form of a special permit if you meet certain criterion. I would recommend as much as you can, especially when you're trying to encourage this gentle, I would call this gentle density. Um, I would encourage it to be by right and uh, but but layout, it's by right if you meet. You know, this, maybe the lot size, you know, I don't know, I mean, you can make it all different ways, but you have to decide what what would be like a no-brainer. Like, yeah, we'd approve this, we don't even need to see it, and then maybe there's another layer that if you don't, maybe you can't meet that rear yard. Then, you know, that's gonna trigger a special permit or something like that. Um, Stowe, Massachusetts is an example that um, there's, there's a bunch out there, but I can't. And when I was looking for a a good illustration for you guys, um, I came across Stowe Mass as. Uh, I think relatively recently, uh, um, amended zoning to allow the hammerhead lot. Any other questions on the strategies while I've got this one up?
So the form bit, so when I went through preliminary, right? I I was trying to identify, what were the actual zoning related, you know, there's a lot in here that are. Great ideas but aren't necessarily zoning per view of the planning board, right? And when I was going through, I think, and you, and I'd love to see if you disagree, but I think option, you know, strategy number three. The affordable housing overlay, we provide really relief if you have a hundred percent affordable. I believe it's something similar, I was every single done, I wanna say Somerville or Cambridge.
Uh, I think they both have, yeah.
And then there's the cottage court and townhome style for age family for non-conforming, which is number five. Number six is the for- form-based overlay, number nine is a form-based code. It tends to hammerhead and I wasn't sure if I was missing it, but those seem to be the five that were. Would be zoning amendments that we would develop as a group and promulgate, were there other ones in here that you you view as? Uh, zoning related or are they more the other aspects of housing production?
The this one, um, I don't know the number, cause I'm, now I'm on a different screen, um, but the one that talks about converting offices to. To housing, even though the way we phrased it, it says do a feasibility study, that's because um, mass housing funds or did. The uh, the funding round is closed, but hopefully that'll open again, but they'll fund things like that to see if that's even something that. Is worthwhile pursuing, but that could lead to zoning changes, depending on what that kind of study, so. That's a little like buried, it doesn't say it's a zoning change and actually, one, one thing we may wanna consider is make it more um. Transparent that that could lead to a zoning, you know, maybe it's study the feasibility of converting commercial um to to. To housing and implement zoning if it's feasible, that kind of thing. But first you wanna see if the market's even there, you don't wanna waste your time putting that zoning in place if nobody's gonna do it, basically.
And that's, and that's really, you're you're talking about an exercise where you're evaluating your business district and seeing if multi is an option.
Exactly, it would be, yeah, it would be either through, um, I mean, this is really talking about. Using the office and com- and other commercials buildings that are underutilized because of the economy and the changes and, you know. People working from home and all of that and seeing if those make sense to reuse as housing and to put zoning in place that would. Encourage or at least allow uh those conversions, but you could also see it as a tear down depending on, you know, and building new housing, so. Either way.
That's really just evaluating what our business district looks like, right? And and with the, with the zoning associated with the business district. Current cost on the housing front.
Yeah, and looking at like the vacancy rates and what are the trends in the market and just seeing if it's. If it's feasible, like if a private property owner would even consider, you know, converting to housing if if zoning allowed it. So that's just the first step. But I think you got the rest of them, um, there's one about local preference, but. But I think you got the rest of them. Um, there's one about local preference, but that really deals. I mean, it could, it could relate to, it's not really your purview. It's really more the ZBA and it's um it's related more to forty Bs and comprehensive permits, but if you have anything that's do you know the difference between Lip and LAU? It says it right here on this, on this slide. So Lip is under chapter forty B, it's another kind of comprehensive permit. That there's basically all these different subsidizing agencies that in order to be considered a comprehensive permit, you have to be subsidized, and I'm putting that in quotes for a specific reason, under one of these subsidizing agencies. Well, I don't know when, but many years ago, um, the former DHCD, now HLC allowed, well, okay, you don't have to be subsidized in that you get money from every agency. You could just go through us and we'll give you technical assistance and we're gonna call it a local um uh initiative um project, a lip. And that means that your local um executive branch usually, or in the, in, actually, in the case of your form of government, probably, is your town council considered your uh executive branch? Anyway, I'm getting into the weeds.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I think your town council then would need to sign on to it as we support it. And that would be a lip, but that's still under comprehensive permit under forty B, meaning you can't do it under your zoning. Um, and then LAU is local action unit. And that's a way that you can create SHI eligible units, but you don't have to use comp permit. It's if you have zoning that basically enables this kind of development. So inclusionary zoning, the affordable housing overlay idea, um, you could have the form based code that requires a certain amount of affordable housing. All of those things, the LAU just means you can do it under your existing zoning and um and it's still gonna be affordable and counted on the subsidized housing inventory. You don't have to go through forty B. So the local initiative, uh, sorry, the local preference policy. Um, I should be on this slide. The local preference policy that you can adopt, it's super easy. It's, I have an example. It's like a one pager. And it just mimics what the statute says you're allowed to do, uh, or what the, um, sorry, the forty B guidelines say you're allowed to do. That could potentially have a little bit to do with zoning if you had things in your zoning bylaw like the affordable housing overlay that would trigger that local preference. And it just means that, you know, the developer, the property owner would then do a lottery. And they'd rank people who had some kind of local connection to Wakefield higher in the lottery. Um, based on some criteria up to seventy percent of the units. So that, like, I'm trying to be thorough in answering your question, Jim. It's not something that the planning board needs to act on, but it would be related to zoning.
No, that, that's very helpful. The um, the other thing that I wanted to ask you as part of this, the housing production plan is we have a number of discreet recommendations for you for us to evaluate kind of separately, but maybe getting bundled into some of this conversation. Um, there's been various conversations at various points based on the state of our maps that they're woefully outdated and look like they haven't been updated since. Yeah, our zoning maps for at least, at least the eighties. Uh, in terms, in terms of like a comprehensive overview, you've had a bunch of overlays that have gotten past ad hoc over time, which seems to be the, the prevalent manner that they've been adjusted. If we're looking at, we've talked about looking at, you know, blank slate, what, what, what makes sense for a thoughtful policy? Are there elements of this housing production plan if we were to embark on that? That would be logical in terms of trying to think about, you know, thoughtfully looking at this. As I said, this isn't something that's like an official go or anything like that. It's just something that has been a conversation point and given where we are in the planning cycle with the master plan, the housing production plan, et cetera. Um, I, I'd like to know if that's something that there's information here that you think would be worthwhile if we built a community engagement process that could facilitate success.
Yeah, you're asking some really good questions. Um, didn't prepare a slide for that one. So I, yeah, it's interesting. So the it's, it's pretty, you know, unfortunately, it's pretty common that communities have zoning maps in particular that have just been like, like duct taped over time as things change and overlay and they're you know, hard to read or, or maybe not even completely accurate anymore. And certainly some of these things would also affect the map, like doing any kind of the form based overlay or form based code, um. Even potentially the cottage court idea, depending on how you, how you structured it, um. The affordable housing overlay probably wouldn't need to be shown on a map, um, just because it's usually written that you need a parcel of a certain size. It's like a almost a floating district, like if you, if you meet this requirement, it doesn't always have to be. Sometimes you can say the affordable housing overlay is only pertinent in this area. But I guess, yeah, I'm trying to think if we, if we could I don't see any specific strategies other than the fact that they would also change your map if they were adopted. Um, but it seems like it would be just good housekeeping to get that map. You know, corrected and, and redone. Um, and then if things got passed along the, along the way, you could kind of keep it clean and, and organized and, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's basically anything right now, which is why the, the nature of the, the conversation. So, no, that, that's very helpful.
With a good map would be a better idea than waiting till you see if you get things approved. Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a strategy that necessarily needs to go in the plan. I mean, you could put it in the plan if you feel like it would be helpful politically, but if you think it's gonna be done anyway, then it doesn't necessarily support housing production. It just makes, makes your policies clear for folks that are looking, looking at your map.
Gotcha. Uh, do any other members of, I know I'm, I'm kind of hogging the, the question time right now, but anyone else have any other questions? I want to make sure that we, uh, we're respectful of Jen's time. No? Uh, so in that case, seeing nothing else, uh, Jen, is there anything else you wanted to, uh, to impart on us before, before we move on?
Just one, uh, one or two things. Um, so I'm supposed to go to the town council in um, June. I I have the date. I can tell you the date. It would be great, even though I'm presenting to the town council. I don't believe it's a joint meeting with you, but um, it would be great if you, if, if any of you were able to come and just, you know, uh, uh, support, I, you know, I don't know what kind of questions we'll get, but it's always helpful to have folks that really understand, especially these zoning. Okay, so I'm scheduled to go Monday, June ninth. To present to them. And then the only other thing I'll say is as you read, especially chapter seven, if you have any questions for me, just send me an email. Um, happy to answer things one by one, or if you you don't want any changes before you, before you vote. You know, this might be probably asking too much, given the timing. It would be helpful to make changes before the town council sees it, but given the timing and your meetings, I don't know if that's possible, but I'll just throw that out there. You know, if, if, if you think it's better, it's not my call. I can do June ninth, but if you feel like it's better to for you guys to take a look, give me some changes, I'll make the changes and then do town council a little bit later. I know we're up against a grant deadline. Um, so that's something else I believe we have to be finished in June. But we can also ask when they need our invoice and just do like town council as a pro bono at, you know, in late June, if, if we need to get the invoice in earlier. But I just want to make sure the process is right for you guys and that the town council sees a plan that, that you're happy with. It's hu, it's harder politically to have both the town council and the planning board look at it independently. And then give me comments that may not agree with each other. And then I have to figure out how am I gonna deal with that? So if the town council has a plan that you support and you feel is the right, you know, the right set of strategies and goals, then it's a lot easier to have a discussion at town council, especially if you're present or some of you to explain. You know, why you wanted certain changes or why you're defending certain things. Does that make sense the way I'm describing that, that part of the process?
It does. I think the, the question is gonna be, can we get our ducks in a row between now and then? Our next meeting is actually the Tuesday after that meeting.
Yeah.
So
I don't know who, you know, who now, I, I'm not dealing with Sam anymore. I think Steve is the go to, but um
Steve Mayo?
Yeah, but if town council wanted to take us up, you know, a little later in the month to allow for that to happen, I think we can make the invoicing piece work. Um, if that would be better for the
Just, just one word of caution, uh, Steve is the town administrator referring who's retiring. And I believe his last day is June thirtieth.
Ah, okay. So he's really retiring soon. Okay.
Yeah.
And do you have a new, a new, uh, uh, replacement or?
No, the, the search committee for the new town administrator was formed within the last week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, their first meetings tonight, actually.
Okay. Well, just let me know. I mean, I have the ninth in my calendar. I'm happy to do it that night, but um, if you feel like shifting those dates around a little, I'm open to doing that.
You know, I mean, I think I, I am more than happy to put this on our agenda for the tenth, June tenth. Um, I don't, it just, we have one other item on the agenda, but we could definitely hit this. Um, so I think we could definitely provide a vote by the tenth. And if you, um, if you deem it to be appropriate, you know, you could potentially shift it to the town council meeting on the twenty third, um, which would potentially facilitate those deadlines you're talking about. But I, um, we could definitely get this on the, uh, the agenda for next week or next, um, our next meeting. Um, that would give the other members of the planning board the time to, to review and be able to provide a vote. Unless, un, unless other members of the planning board feel differently and you wanted to, to vote on it tonight, but I would advocate to to push to our next meeting to give everyone some time with the document, given the, its length and complexity.
Yeah, I, I'd certainly agree to, to push it to the, to the tenth. I mean, um, yeah, I, I, I think the, I think the process has been uh helpful and transparent. Um, but it would, uh, it would be nice to for the, the, for this body to, to have a more constructive uh sort of final conversation around it.
Um, may I, may I just ask just the protocol of how would you want, would you want me to communicate that to, to Steve or would it be more appropriate for for the, for Jim, that as the chair or I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. I just want to make sure I'm following the right channels.
Yeah.
You know, I, honestly, I think it probably would go be between yourself and Steve, since you're the one who's gonna be um going to that. You can, you can just let him know that you came, you came to us and presented and we are going to take a vote on it on the tenth. And then you can let him decide if he wants to schedule you for the ninth or on the tenth. Um, I don't, I don't want to speak for him and how he wants to manage that process with the town council.
Sure, that, that is fine with me. And um, and should I just copy you on that communication, Jim?
Yeah, and I'm more than happy to, to, if you copy me on that and I can connect with Steve if he, he deems, deems it appropriate.
Okay, and I'm not, just, I'm sorry to take up your time on all these logistics, but I'm not sure I have your emails. So if you don't mind, um, it, or maybe Theo, you could send me Jim's email. I know that
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll connect the loop.
Great, thank you so much. All right, well, it's a pleasure to, to talk with you all. And again, if you have questions, just send me an email. Happy to answer things piecemeal or if you want to wait till the I mean, hopefully you'll vote on the tenth, so all your questions will be done before then, but just let me know how I can be helpful.
Great.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Well, thank you so much. And this, this document looks great. I, I, I don't want to disappoint the problem, but I want to go through and take a look at it. So thank you so much for the time. Thank you, thank you for spending the time with us.
Of course. All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I will close item number three, housing production plan of the meeting minutes and move on to item number four, review of summer schedule. So just to set a baseline, I think um, at this time, we've got meetings, uh, two meetings in July and uh, two meetings in August. And so a lot of times we'll, we'll take some of those off depending on if there's any relevant board um, business. Uh, I do know that um, that uh, we've got town staff who's gonna be out of office, but it's in August. Um, so I don't know if anyone disagrees, but I, I think what makes sense to me is that our six twenty four meeting, the June, June twenty fourth, if there is no relevant planning board business to cancel one or one of the meetings in July and potentially do the same thing in August. But I don't want to necessarily go ahead and cancel it right now in case something comes up that requires our uh, more immediate attention in A and R, for example. Um, Bill, you've, you, you can, you've been, you've been, uh, you've seen us operate for more time than I have. Does that seem consistent with what we've done in the past?
It does. We've had, um, we've had mixes of this where if we do have a lot, we do meet twice in August. But August or July, whichever one, there's been times where we've just met once in July, once in August. Um, it's really up to us to how we want to do this. Um, I'm actually available for yeah, I, I, I don't have any conflicts, so I don't know if anybody else has conflicts for the second and fourth Tuesdays.
Personally, I've got, I've got one conflict for one of the July meetings, but other than that, I believe I'm not conflicted. So more than happy to, to let Kevin run it, run the meeting that I'm not available for if he, if, uh, if we have it. But otherwise, that, that was kind of my, my thought is that we'd make a call kind of in June about the July meetings and then a call in the August meeting and whatever July meeting we have.
It's one to, um, Susan, which I can't remember when we are not available.
I'm away from August eleventh through the twenty fifth.
Okay.
So I think that would be the one that I'd want to cancel the most.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too. And that's, I think traditionally the one that we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm conflicted on the, the twenty second of July. But I, my, my thought is probably tentatively have the seventh or the eighth of July and the twelfth of August is the two that we'd cancel unless there was relevant immediate business. Um, but we make that call on the twenty fourth and then the twenty second of July.
Okay.
I'm in Costa Rica on the twenty sixth of August. I just don't know if I'm going to have like a reliable cell service or not internet at all, so.
Wow. Yep, so we should just cancel it. Only because it's, that's, that's also the day. So I, that's traditionally the meeting we do with the most vacation time for the majority of the board members and the public. It's, it's not even just we would probably have three board members available for any of these meetings. I think the issue is if we do have an item, we won't get the public input if we do have anything that does require that. And then we won't, like, there might be a meeting schedule, but the attorney or the engineers that are involved won't have the information or they won't be there. So that's what's happened in the, happened in the past too. But for pretty much July to August.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is maybe punt this conversation to the six twenty four meeting. And we'll, we'll make a call then, unless others disagree.
Yeah, sounds, makes sense.
Okay. Okay, so in that case, I'll close item number four and we'll move on to item number five. Items not anticipated by the chair. Does anyone have anything that they would like to bring up at this time?
I, I would just say the recent town uh article about the median house price uh being nine hundred thousand dollars in Wakefield is uh alarming and it does put the, I think, all of the needs and all the issues uh sort of raised in uh, in the housing production plan in, in good relief. Um, and um yeah, I'd, um, I hope that um, I, I think like that also just sort of talks to uh being able to have uh, how we have discussion, you know, be, being able to point to, to that and um, and sort of, but both the pros and the cons of, of what that means, you know, people uh, regard that as a, as a high point, as a good point, but it, it also means a lot of people are being priced out.
Anything else, Theo?
Yeah, that's it for me.
Okay, any other members of the board?
I have a couple of things I can share from bylaw review committee. Um, so first on the signed bylaw, CBA is still reviewing that. This was as of our meeting last Tuesday. Um, they felt they need one to two more meetings and then they want to send that to us into Attorney Bobrowski, just so he can slot it into the overall zoning recodification um, to get the numbers right for everything, knowing there may still be additional changes to it. Um, also
And Kevin, the intent would be that that signage overlay, as contemplated by the ZBA, gets baked into the recodification or it's still separate and they're voted on separately. The recodification or it's still separate and they're voted on separately.
It's a good question, so. There, there's a sign by law and then there's the sign overlay district. And as we talked about it more, what Chair Lieber suggested and I think the, the group agreed with is. Not to make any changes to the overlay district because those would be. Larger changes that either should be driven by this body or town council. Rather than BRC, which is just doing recodification of the zoning bylaws. So at that point, there wouldn't really be any substantial changes to the overlay district. Uh, that said, the group felt like there probably does need to be some changes to the overlay district, so. That might be something that we want to look at or talk with town council and see if they want to look at in the future.
And that's the, the sign, the overlay district is the one with the, the defunct design review board, right?
Yes, and there, there also is. So what the, the, the main thing that BRC wants to clear up is that if someone opens a business. They understand if they need to abide by the sign by law or the sign overlay district by law. Because right now there's confusion over, am I picking one or the other or is it both of these that I have to abide by?
Okay, well, I, I strongly advocate that we figure out what the work product is that we're gonna get from the ZBA because the, uh. Us not being able to approve signage is not. Acceptable. I think everyone here is fully on board with that. And so I would really love to find a way that we could make it so that language related to the defunct design review board goes away in the fall. What, what mechanism that is, I'm, I'm somewhat agnostic, but I just feel like that's. We know we've got this issue and I feel like waiting almost a whole year to resolve it, to wait to the next spring is just not. Not okay. I, I think we've got, we gotta do what right by the, the business owners and figure out how to fix that. Uh, and whether that we bake it in as a separate thing or we bake it into the recodification, I don't necessarily have a strong horse in that race, but. I, I think we owe that to the public to, to do our job and to, and to, to fix a known issue. So, uh, more, you know, and Kevin, if you, if you and I want to connect with Chair Lieber. Um, separately to figure out what, what makes the most sense, I, I'm more than happy to do that. Um, that, that may be the next, the best next step to just try to figure out. You know, we're all trying to roll in the same direction, but and not step on each other's toes, but we got a fair way to get that fixed.
Yeah, maybe after ZBA sends us what they send us, then we connect with him.
I, I agree. And then the DBA, you said that they think that's another two meetings, so they think it's by end of June?
Uh, I think Joe said they have a meeting this week. And then, yeah, mid to late June. Um, and then an update just on overall timing for the zoning re- recodification. Um, it sounds like according to Chair Lieber, the fall town meeting will be likely either November sixth or November tenth. Which would mean articles need to be submitted by late August, early September timeframe. Um, prior to having public hearings that planning board would host. BRC wants to hold public presentations, uh, kind of similar to what we did with the ADU bylaw. Um, Attorney Bobrowski and Chair Lieber would present, those would last no more than ten minutes and then get. Public feedback, public questions. Chair Lieber liked the idea of sort of doing that as part of. Town council, planning board and ZBA scheduled meetings so that those could come in front of those groups as well as whoever from the public. Would be available to join those. So he wanted to see if planning board would be interested in adding that as an agenda item. To one of our summer meetings when we do hold one and he was gonna have similar conversations with town council and ZBA.
When does he think he'll be ready?
He was anticipating anytime between June and August to be able to do those public presentations.
Cause if he's ready, we have s- time on our six twenty-four. Meeting.
That should work.
And so if, 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 if BRC is gonna be ready for that date, then I think. That would be preferable than to schedule a bunch of forums in July and August. That feels like asking for accusations of you're trying to. Have a public process when no, when everyone's on vacation and you're trying to do it. You, I know that's been a very transparent process, but. It feels like you're opening yourself up to that line of attack.
Yeah, no, it, it sounded like Attorney Bobrowski would be ready on six twenty-four. So I'll, I'll check with Dan this week and make sure that that works.
Any other items not anticipated by the chair? Okay, so in that case, I've got one, one, um, so an update related to one ninety-seven Nahat, uh, where we talked about last time. The driveway, uh, so I did relay that to, uh, Aaron Kokinda, who's taking over as the lead contact with the. The homeowner and, uh, we, there's been some correspondence between myself, her and Bill Renaud. Um, it was agreed upon that from a process perspective. That it, the submission of as built. As long as the, the reconfigured driveway conforms with the as built and they're accepted as such. That that would be sufficient from a documentation perspective, no additional, you know, formalized review would be required. And, and so, um, Aaron is gonna reach out to the homeowner and let, let them know related to that. Uh, and so we will, um, utilize that as a process on a go forward basis. And then the, uh, the only other thing I had that I just want to kind of. Raise my hands and just have everyone start thinking about is, you know, I think. With the housing production plan coming to the end, as we talked about today. As well as we've got the master plan, which I believe is also kind of call it Q one, Q two of this year gonna wrap up. And then the fall town meeting where we'll have the bylaw recodification. Um, I know we, a number of us have talked about it at different times, but I do think we might want to start thinking about the relooking in the map. Right? And, and I know that's a major effort. I think we're getting to the point where it makes sense. Um, and there's all these other items that are incorporating that, but I want folks on this, on this, uh, board to think about. Participation and, and if anyone wants to be, I'll call it the champion of, of, of a map effort. You know, I don't anticipate we're gonna potentially start this effort until we have a new town planner. My understanding is that's probably late Q three or early Q four of this year at the earliest. So, you know, I'm thinking it's really more probably like a twenty-six type of exercise. Um, so we're definitely way early, but I just want people to start thinking about, you know, what the level of appetite to be engaged in that process is. And how to structure it in a manner that would be more conducive to success than our three A process. Just cause I think we're all trying to find that balance of transparency, uh, but actually getting that public engagement. And so I, I, I'm not saying I know the answer, but I want to just put people in people's heads. To start thinking about it so that when the time is right, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna try to, try to actually hit it with a little bit of momentum.
So when we're talking about like reaching out to people in the community and trying to get more engagement, like. Would it be, have, I mean, I don't know how you guys did it before with the MBTA overlay, but. I mean, is it possible to maybe reach out to the friends of Lake Quanapawet, maybe some local PTA, you know, all the local PTOs? Um, and just ask them to like push out basically like reminders of any meetings that we have. To all of them, because I think a lot of folks like aren't necessarily watching the town website or like, you know, not getting those notifications and. You know, folks are busy, they, they may, maybe just missing things.
Uh, you know, I think it's a great, great observation and set of ideas. I'll be honest, you know, I think that we probably lacked the, the public outreach for the three A that we probably quote, quote, should have. And honestly, this is one of the reasons why I don't necessarily know how much we're gonna really push it until we have a town planner because. Everyone here is a volunteer who has a day job and other obligations and so the, the level of bandwidth to really do some of that. Um, I think was somewhat lacking compared to where I think we need to be for this level of effort. But I think it's a great, great series of, uh, places to go.
Yeah, I'm just kind of like wondering like, cause you think about like folks that may not always agree with us, but have like a big reach, like someone like. Brian Fox, who's prob- maybe on town council soon, but like. You know, he has like, if I invite all my friends to come to a meeting, they're all gonna pretty much agree with me. But if, you know, maybe we can get more people. Like we identify like key people in the community and then just ask them to kind of push things out to their kind of groups. Even if there are people that we know don't agree with us, that actually might be helpful. Like, I don't know if we have like a town Republican group, but like. I feel like they're probably gonna be anti-zoning changes, but. They might be helpful to be at some of those meetings.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great series of, of, of ideas. And so these are the types of things that I want all of us to be thinking about. So when we do start crafting the process. We can try to figure out who's on point for each of those. And I think we probably want to just make sure that we're. We're all allocating roles. At a certain point, we don't just dump it all on one person, say good luck.
I, I also wonder if we want to. Communicate and coordinate with the town director of communications for that, which I think. We probably didn't utilize her as much as we could or should have with three A and. To be quite honest, I don't think the town utilizes her for community outreach as much as it could as a whole. So that could be a person that we, um, sort of bring into the fold as well.
Absolutely. Well, uh, anything else anyone has that before they, uh, we potentially close that and move on to adjournment? So in that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And do I hear a second? Motion by Kristen, seconded by Kevin, roll call, vote, Bill? Kevin? Kristen? And myself, yes. So thank you everyone for this meeting and, uh, I'll see you all on the town.